Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes? As those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you very much. We'll now take a roll call for the minute and would ask if members would confirm they were present when I call their names. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Okay, thank you. I've received apologies from Bailey Wright and I believe that councillor Crookshank is present as her substitute. Is councillor Crookshank present?
Present.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon. Present.
Thank you. And I've received apologies from Bailey Scott. And also received apologies from Bailey Roberts. Is Deputy Lord Provost Cordell present? Deputy Lord Provost Cordell. Mark Lam is absent at this moment in time. Councillor Nakla.
Hi, I'm present.
You're thank you. And finally councillor Short.
Afternoon, I'm here.
You're thank you. That concludes the roll call. That then takes you onto declarations of interest. It's one of my members many declarations to the content of the agenda as it stands. And there being no declarations, that then takes you on to item two designated police commander.
Willie, I did put in the chat that I have a declaration of interest. It's in relation to item five, our family member is a member of teaching staff at Bull Dragon Academy.
Okay, thanks very much for letting me know, Bailey McPherson. Okay, item two then is designated police commander, which is for noting.
Well, I suppose we should note the sort of contribution that Phil has made within Dundee over the time that he's been here and wish him well moving forward. And obviously look forward to working again with Nicola and her managing to keep our streets safe for us. I wish both them well in their new roles. Thank you. If you move on then, Willie.
Okay, thanks very much. Convener, item three then before is Craigie Cottage, which is you're asking you recommendations.
Anyone want to talk to this report to start with?
Happy to come in, convener, and introduce the report. And then I have colleagues on the call from the social work team here to answer your questions. So this is a report from an inspection of our newest children's house, Craigie Cottage. It just opened in August last year and two weeks later was inspected by the care inspectorate, which we have to say thought was a wee bit unfair. But we had looked at the needs in the city and had repurposed this house for younger children. So it was originally to be opened for a teenage age group, but we changed it to six to twelve-year-olds. And so the care inspectorate did acknowledge that we just opened and that people were just settling in, including young people and staff. And so there were some early signs of the kind of good work that was to come in this house. But they did go ahead with inspection and so the report, as you'll see, has four requirements and three areas for improvement. And we've also contained in the report all the actions that we would take to address these. The overall grade has come out as weak and we're very disappointed in that. And certainly because of that, there will be a return inspection in May of this year. And so this will be followed up with a further report on progress to you at committee after that date and after that return visit. So leave it there, convener, if you want to have any questions.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, I see you're looking to come in.
Thanks, convener, and thanks Audrey for the introduction. Obviously, yes, a disappointing grading, particularly if we look back at Fairbairn, the previous facility, its last grading, as I recall, was good. And I think our young persons housing generally has good and very good gradings overall over an extended period of time. And I note the point that Audrey makes regarding the fact that this inspection took place, you know, quite frankly, five minutes after the facility opened. Now, I sort of do question the timing of it. I was just really wondering, by way of a question, in relation to the issues raised, do you feel that the issue around staff absences and sessional staff at the time was a significant factor in this? And are we confident that staffing going forward will be in a position that we won't have that sort of issue going forward? And we're therefore more confident that when this is re-inspected at some point in the future, we'll get a more satisfactory grading?
Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. I see Glenn is probably best placed to answer this one.
Glenn.
Thanks, Audrey, and thank you again for the question, Bailey McPherson. And we think it was actually a combination of the staff absences and the lack of confidence of the staff that were in post at the time in relation to younger children, the six to eleven-year-old group, as opposed to the eleven to twenty-one-year-old group. What I can confirm is that all vacancies have now been filled, that the absences have reduced markedly, at least partly as a result of applying the council absence management procedure. And that typically there's a one-to-one staffing ratio, given the vulnerability of children in the house. You can see in the report as well that that's been accompanied by a broad range, a very, very broad range of training, including in relation to restraint amongst other things. This regular management oversight, including frequent visits, and I myself attended the house just yesterday and were confident that based on all the evidence that we've seen, that when the care inspectorate come back next month, they'll see a very different picture at the house.
I'm grateful for that, Glenn. Obviously, we'll await the outcome of that and obviously hope that this positive trajectory continues. So grateful for the response. Thank you.
Glenn, your short to councillor Shaw.
Thank you, convener. I guess I suppose this is a snapshot of an inspection. But just to understand, obviously, the change of the cohort going into the home must have been quite a radical move and quite an adventurous decision to make. So really, I guess the question is, is that has and do you feel that it's long-term situation with having people, young people as young as six in the environment? Do you think generationally it's going to achieve the objectives based on what you've seen so far? I mean, obviously, just very, very brave, as I say, to have such a young cohort coming in. But presumably already you're feeling the waves of progress and opportunity with regards to that?
And again, thank you for the question, councillor Shaw. And we re-provisioned the house, the age profile, based on the ages of children in external residential care. So first and foremost, we wanted to bring them back from external residential care so they're closer to their own families, their own schools and their own local communities, as well as prevent future children going out, as well in fact, to external residential care. We've achieved that and, as you know, the overall numbers in terms of the balance have been forty-three in external residential at the start of the year and now at twenty-two in April this year. What I can also say is that of those that have come back, a number have subsequently moved on to kinship care, to their own extended families and also to foster care. So it's serving the purpose, it's bringing children back to the city, it's providing support at a local level, including in relation to links with their family and ongoing contact with their family. And then from there, it's giving them the opportunity to move in to local family-based support, including their own family and foster care families as well. So it's working, actually. The model is working. And as we can see from the inspection, the care inspectorate welcomed the vision in that regard.
Yeah. And so I guess it's one of those things that hopefully the team are always on their toes and ready because I'm guessing that we've been really quick to the mark and dynamic in what we've done in this way. And it's probably something that you might see appearing across other local authorities down the time. But it's probably something that will be very much an interest will be taken in on it and how those sort of generations progress through various stages within their kind of grown-up years. So thank you.
Yes, councillor Crookshanks.
Thank you, convener. Just going back to the staffing levels and what the care inspectorate had highlighted as areas needing addressed, in particular the risk assessments and the child protection plans, sorry, the care plans for the children. I assume this is now all in place and I'm grateful to the executive director of Children and Family Services for giving me a briefing on this. But I'm just looking for an update and to ensure that these are now in place. Thank you.
And yes, and again, thank you for the question, councillor Crookshank. And the issue there was that although the care inspectorate said that we'd matched children appropriately to the house before they arrived and concluded that it was an appropriate form of support, after they arrived, that they reacted to the environment and their behaviour deteriorated and we didn't assess that and adapt to that quickly enough. So what we now have in place is a weekly review of all risk assessments, all care plans, and we adjust them based on whether or not there have been any changes in the children's needs or indeed in relation to their behaviour. We have evidence of that because we audit that, we quality assure that on a weekly basis. And Yvonne, who's in the meeting today, attends the house on at least a weekly basis to oversee all of that. And we think you'll see that when the care inspectorate come back in May and report again to scrutiny committee later on this year.
Thank you so much, Glenn. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe I should ask a question myself, or I suppose make a comment. I think we always try to make sure that young people in our care get the best possible care that they can get, given that, you know, we realise that they've not got the best starting life and stability is clearly something that they need to be delivered to. You know, up to now, our care facilities have always produced, you know, really good inspection reports. So I suppose it's disappointing over for the staff that have been involved. But, you know, I think we've kind of left people a bit exposed here with the staffing levels and perhaps needing to use restraint when, in best practice, not being followed there. Given that we're only three, I'm not sure how they would need to use restraint, but I can understand that that change of environment might have kids with additional needs kick off big style. And, you know, but bringing around that stability is really where we need to be. So obviously hoping that we'll have got everything into place and we do start seeing a real turnaround in the facility and suggesting that being fully staffed can hopefully deliver that. There's a question in there, just a sort of a rant that, you know, I think it's important that we deliver the best for looked-after children. Because at the end of it all, moving out of school, usually they've got the worst results and the worst possible starting life. And we could make anything to improve that in some way. It would make a real difference to people moving forward and their best starting life as it were. Okay, Glenn, you want to make a comment, yeah?
I appreciate the response, Bailey Keenan, and the support. And just to reassure the committee that there are different forms of restraint, ranging from guiding through to holding on a one-to-one and a two-to-one basis. We try to minimise that as far as possible, including via scenario planning and identification of triggers and minimisation of triggers and such like. Sometimes, though, young people become upset and dysregulated. And when restraint is applied, and hopefully you can now see that in the report and through regular audits of incidents, when restraint is applied, we're confident that it's applied appropriately and proportionally in the most caring possible way.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm sure that that's an intention of the staff that work there. It's not, you know, to control people that much, but you need to make sure that kids don't hurt themselves and hurt others in the same process. I know that these things would need to happen. I appreciate the comments and, you know, I appreciate the work that the staff do on our behalf. And, you know, I suppose the report that I've got here kind of lets them down a bit as well. So hopefully we can make a difference moving forward because we should be supporting them and doing their job. Okay, Willie, we'll move on.
Convener, I was just going to finish by trying to just say I hope you saw the nods around the room from the team, the virtual room, and to give that reassurance that absolutely we take the learning from the inspection, especially as you said, we've had so many really good inspections for our care homes, our children's care houses. And actually, you know, we're very disappointed by this too. So we need to address it and we need to ensure that we can give this committee reassurance that we were looking to make the improvements that have been recommended. Thank you.
Cheers. Okay, Willie, we'll move on. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, convener. With that item being agreed, item four then is each my inspection of Long Hall Primary School. You're asking the recommendations.
Mrs May, you're looking to say a few words? I know we've got the head teacher here as well.
We do, and we'll give them the opportunity to answer the difficult questions I'm sure you'll pose. But I'll just say a few words of introduction. This is the short model inspection of Long Hall Primary School in the north-east of the city, an area where lots of the children and families in the community have got real disadvantage and suffer from some deprivation. And so you can see the profile of the school in the report. And the school also contains the Long Hall Support Group, which is an ASN provision for children from all over Dundee. And so that was also inspected as part of this short model. So the short model, as you've heard us saying before, doesn't really reflect a holistic view of the school and the way that we would want to present to committee. So just inspecting the two QIs, two-point-three and three-point-two, so looking at learning, teaching the classroom, raising attainment. However, and so we always feel it doesn't give that full picture of leadership and inclusion, the ethos and the culture of a school. However, overall, I think it's a very, very good report, significant number of strengths. If you look at the list of strengths compared to the list of areas for improvement, they certainly, the strengths more than outweigh the lists of areas for improvement. So overall, a really positive report. In fact, the evaluations came out as good in terms of the criteria that HMI used, but were described as strong goods, which we would say then should have been very good. But there you go, it's not a gift to do that. But it's certainly a very positive report. And as you say, we've got Nikki Jenkins here as the head teacher. If there's any particular questions for her. Thank you.
Okay. I notice Bailey McPherson's looking to come in with a comment or a question.
Thanks, convener. And again, thanks to Audrey for her introduction. I don't think we can, you know, and you alluded to Audrey, I don't think we can doubt the huge areas of strength shown in this report. In fact, they are so lengthy, you wonder what it takes to get a very good out of the inspectors. But the point fundamentally, I would say, is this is a very positive report indeed. And I always think it's interesting, and I've said this sort of thing before, where you see areas for improvement, which in my opinion aren't areas for improvement, they're areas for continuing the good practice you're already doing. And by which I mean, two of the areas for improvement are that staff should continue to ensure learning activities across the curriculum, provide the right level of challenge and meet the needs of individual learners. So that's a continue, not to start doing. And also that staff should continue to improve children's progress along across all curricular areas. So in other words, continue the good practice that you're already doing. So I think, you know, Nikki and her team deserve significant congratulations for a really good report. I do have one question and it's in relation to the comment from the inspectors around providing and promoting more opportunities for children to enjoy reading, both at school and at home. And I was just really wondering how the school is tackling that. We obviously want young people to get into the habit of reading for enjoyment. And it would be good to learn what steps the school is taking to ensure that happens and is encouraged with the school as well as within the school.
Yeah. I saw you then, Nicola, for a comment.
No, we'll let the head teacher answer that one, I think. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your question. Reading for enjoyment, absolutely something that we are always promoting. However, since inspection, it has encouraged us to raise the profile of reading across the school. We recently relaunched our school library and have primary seven leaders who are taking real ownership and responsibility with that. And it is visited regularly by classes but also by children during the lunchtime. So lunchtime visits have significantly increased over the past few months. We also took the opportunity to involve parents in our drive to improve reading for enjoyment. So they've been in since inspection for book cafes and we look to continue these opportunities whilst also encouraging our children to use the local library, which is just footsteps from us.
Yeah, very, very grateful for the response. That's very reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, convener. My first ever house was Quality Field Court and now it's the school. I didn't work it out until I went to Quarry View Nursery and saw and suddenly clicked, wait a minute. And so I'm very jealous of your views. The views from the school are absolutely amazing. And the point of the question is, I'm thinking that you're probably at a point now where your first cohort is nearing off your last cohort when it comes to your ones to sevens. So the question really is about the fact that you've got this incredible new campus. Your next sort of cohorts are going to end up going to the new, new campus down below. And the experience within that area when it comes to education and getting such good feedback from the inspectorate. Is there a feeling that that investment in the community and the school within the community is beginning to come through in the fruition? And exactly why we do invest in infrastructure to support people to come through their schooling in the best opportunities possible?
Yeah, absolutely. Since we moved into this campus, many children, parents and partners comment on the amazing facility that we have. And it's definitely something that our children, families and partners take pride in. So the fact that this cohort that are about to leave are also celebrating the prospect of another new school coming in just a year's time has been absolutely incredible for these children. And we do take real pride in the facilities that they have. So yes, it's absolutely taken us and strengthened the offer that we give our young people. So we're very grateful for this facility.
Brilliant. And it flies a little bit in the face of, oh, it's all about the waterfront. When you go and look at the new houses around you and the new school and the new shops, it really is a long way from it was forty-nine years ago when I left. In fact, I think I've shaved a few years off. I think it was fifty-three years ago when I left. But never mind, another story. But thank you so much and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councillor Natla.
Yeah, there's so much positivity in this report and so, you know, the list of strengths is very long, which is lovely to see. I guess I just had a question about one of the areas for improvement, which says the local authority should work with senior leaders to ensure all children access education between LSG and the mainstream school to ensure that they have a full-time educational programme. I was just wondering what that entails as a layperson. What does that mean? How does it become improved?
Thank you for the question, councillor Natla. I'm going to ask, and Paul Fleming is the head of education, to come in and answer that one for you.
Thank you very much, Audrey. Thank you, councillor Natla. Nicola Jenkins is the head teacher of Long Hall, which does include Long Hall Support Group too. We have a deputy specifically in there to operationally lead, but Nicola is the strategic lead and Nicola will work very closely with the authority. We have up to twelve young people who attend from our primary schools across the city and they have complex additional support needs, mostly of a social, emotional and behavioural area. And so sometimes displayed dysregulated behaviours. They have a very bespoke educational package that suits their interests and suits their needs, depending on that very individual package of needs, if you like. So they can be very different and that depends on the school to go to, the age and stage and the time. For example, some of the young people referred in the previous report may be in that as well. So they may return from the city. So young people are entitled to a certain amount of hours a week. And depending on the point in time of which HMI came, there are one or two of young people that were just at such a point in their, in their time of displaying distressed behaviour that weren't accessing full-time across both their mainstream school and their time in the Long Hall Support Group. So this has all been encompassed within our ASN review and we're looking to see what different types of support we can add to that. For example, additional use of the Ancrum Outdoor Activity Centre and other packages to make sure that young people can access different types of education, but for the full-time throughout Monday to Friday, all day, every day, throughout the full term.
Okay, so it's just a supplementary, just so you said that your access in Ancrum, is it then trying to just work around a wraparound approach with the council, the school and other bodies?
Absolutely, yes.
A bit more than maybe what was happening before, is that right?
Absolutely. For one or two young people, they didn't quite have that full package because all of the young people that should not attend Long Hall Support Group full-time, it's about trying to maintain that place in mainstream. So we just look to build that up at an appropriate pace for each individual young person. And so it's always making sure we're on top of that, that we're building that up at the most appropriate pace, using all the resources available to us across the full council in terms of that wraparound care and education that you referred to, councillor.
Thank you.
Okay. Like others, I think it's an excellent report. So well done, the head teacher and the staff at the school. You know, it's a pity you didn't get the higher mark, as Mrs May pointed out. Just that for me, every day is a school day, so I need to do a bit of learning as well. So perhaps I can ask the question, maybe the authority, it's around the sort of comments made around safeguarding, where it suggests that areas for development had been agreed with the school and the education authority. So I'm just wondering what they are and how are they seen as if it's going to develop best practice here across the rest of the schools in Dundee?
Again, I know that Mr Fleming's been leading on this with the team, so I'll ask him to come in and give you a wee indication of what that's about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bailey Keenan, for the question. Yes, so the inspection team, as they said in the summary of inspection findings, look at all the tried protection documents and safeguarding and have had absolutely no concerns, hence the really, really positive report. The specific comments referenced here around areas for development were in relation to Long Hall Support Group again. And similar to the areas for development, which you can see detailed in the report, they really are about continuing to. So it's about those primary age young people who have those complex additional support needs of a social, emotional and behavioural nature. And sometimes those young people display this dysregulated behaviour, we've already talked about in the previous committee report. And it's about making sure the staff continue to ensure that they have that up-to-date knowledge of the very latest guidance. And that's with particular reference to the recording of any incidents of either, for example, pupil-led withdrawal or physical interventions. And that specifically is set out in the national guidance included engaged and involved part three, which is about a relationship and rights-based approach to physical intervention in Scottish schools. So our folks in Long Hall Support Group don't just support the twelve young people in the group, they actually do work in other schools around that remote support. And as you referenced, making sure that all schools are up to date in terms of best practice. So it's about continuing to do that, given the national agenda around behaviour and relationships and the use of physical interventions. So keeping up to date the knowledge and sharing that across all of our schools across the city and recording that appropriately.
Okay, thanks very much for that response. I don't see any other questions. This report agreed? Okay, once agreed, let's move on then, Willie. Thanks to the head teacher as well and she and her staff.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Item five then is each my return visit to Bull Dragon Academy.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Five things. Each my return visit to Ball Dragon Academy, you're asking recommendations. Good. Mrs May, you look to say a few words on this, and I know that we all visited the school just recently, so.
Okay, keep it brief then. As you know, this is a report on the return visit after the original visit, which was back in last, would you believe, January twenty three, but the final report was not published till June twenty three. So as a result of that, the 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 return visit would be six month report, hence December. And again, just just highlighting that the school has focused on the improvement, its improvement plans on all the identified areas that came up in the original inspection. And and as you can see, the progress report has been highlighting the areas that have moved forward and and they were highlighted as part of the turn visit. So the report you will see highlights ten key areas where progress has been noted, positive progress, which is is really reassuring for all of us, and six areas where the next steps have been highlighted as well. I'm reassuring again to see the language used around strengthen, continue, maintain, and indeed share highly effective practice that can be found in the school. So members of the scrutiny committee, as you said, Billy, Billy Keenan, convener, has have visited recently. So hopefully you've seen some firsthand evidence of that progress and are all reassured that the school is actually on a a real improvement journey now. Thank you. I'll leave it there and you'll have questions, I'm sure.
Maybe before we go to the questions, and I know that Billy McPherson's looking to come in. I know that there was someone from the parent council that was along, and I wondered if they wanted to make a comment. Is it yourself, Mary? And if you want to make a comment before we bring others in, I'm happy to let that happen. You need to take yourself off mute if you want to.
Yeah, thanks, convener. So. Yeah, I mean, I was at the the meeting where the original report came to. I mean, I I have nothing but praise for the school. I realise, you know, there are areas that we need to improve in. But I think the school's done a great job. Anyway, and since the since the inspection, since the first inspection, that is just, it's it's got even better. So, you know, I know exactly where my kids are. I've got two going through exams, the first one's tomorrow. So, you know, all the way through the year, I've known where they are, I've known what they needed to work on, I've known, you know, they know where they can access support. They know what they need to do to keep moving forward. And I've got a third at Ball Dragon as well, she's an S two. So, and again, I know exactly where she is with with her learning in the school. I mean, as ever, there are, you know, improving way, improving attendance, improving kind of behaviours in school. That, you know, that can be done in every school. And we actually had a parent partnership meeting last night, so I heard from Hugh there about the new approach that they're looking to introduce in the school, and it all sounds really positive. So I'll just leave it there and come in.
Oh, thanks for your comments and being supportive for the school as well, especially when your kids go there. So it's it's good that you're you're as engaged as you are. Could do that with more parents, it would be make a difference. I'll bring in Bailey McPherson.
Thanks indeed. Very grateful to Mary for her for her input, because I think we came away from the visit to the school, I think, with a very positive impression of a school that's on a journey in relation to its improvement plan, but making really positive strides. I think we're all impressed with the head teacher and the senior leadership team and the actions that they've taken to address some of the issues that were raised by, well, I think they would accept was a disappointing report back in what seems like a lifetime ago now at the start of twenty twenty three. But I think I think we certainly left with a positive impression of solid progress and a clear roadmap to continuing progress at Ball Dragon. It was myself that originally asked for the for the visit of the scrutiny committee. And I think that it was, I was grateful to officers and the and the school for agreeing to that. I think it was very worthwhile because it's all very well getting the paper report, if you like, from whether it be Education Scotland or indeed with other inspections, the care inspector. But it brings the situation at any school alive when you do that. I'm not suggesting that every report that lands on our committee agenda in future, we have a visit. But I think from time to time, it is something worth doing, particularly where there are a number of issues being addressed. Because in this particular instance, a visit to the school and seeing some of the initiatives at the school gave us a great deal of reassurance that the school is on a very positive project trajectory. So very grateful to the school for, you know, welcoming us to Ball Dragon. And we look forward to seeing the continuing progress of the school going forward. Thank you, convener.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I think I would echo your comments. I believe that we benefited out of having a look around the school, being able to dig that body deeper and and show being shown the tracking that was going on and and looking at the pupils across the school to see that there will be continuous improvement going forward. So as you say, it might not be something that we would do every time. It might be something that we would benefit in other areas that were scrutinised, to visit bits of council. It certainly proved to be a benefit there. And, you know, I suppose for the point of view, I'd agree with what Mary was saying. It looks like a staff team that have worked very hard at turning the the very negative report into hopefully moving forward a very positive report. So no other questions. Is this report agreed? Sorry, is that Lynn, you're looking to come in?
Yeah, sorry, I picked it quite late. And it was just to say that I appreciate all the work that Willie Waddell did to actually bring this to fruition. And I was going to say thanks to you, convener, but seeing as Bailey McPherson has said it was his idea, maybe I shouldn't say it to both of you. Thank you to you both. Obviously, I know my way upside down and in and out when it comes to Clifton, Gleblins and the Morgan, and possibly the Harris as well because of being a parent. But actually to go into another part of the world, which is almost as far away from where I usually operate, as could possibly be, it was like being in the countryside, I was that far away from the river. And it was just actually incredible to see what was going on out at this school and really, really appreciated seeing Ball Dragon for for what it was. It was really, really good. And thank you, Hugh, for opening your doors and presenting us with your senior pupils and the lovely refreshments that we got. It was really good. And it is so much easier to see it and sit to, it really is. And thank you so much for all the the hard work that you're doing and keep at it, especially with those Arab boys.
Okay, thanks for the very positive comments. Is this report agreed? Yep, okay, thanks. We'll move on then, Willie. Yeah, thanks to be united from six things, local government in Scotland, financial bulletin is a report by Robert Emmett, which is for noting. You want to say anything on the report, Robert?
I'm nothing to add, convener. Happy to take any questions on it. And and we've also got Rachel Brown, audit director, and Richard Smith, audit manager from Audit Scotland on the call, who may be able to help with any questions, convener.
Okay. So any questions on this report? Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, convener, I had a couple of questions, but they were very technical, so I sent them off to Paul Thompson. So I'm presuming that Paul will furnish me with the answers because I I I don't want to drag everybody down to my level when it comes to financial understanding. So I hope to hear from Paul soon. So thank you for that.
Can I maybe ask the question about how officers would try to deal with the sort of public engagement of trying to make sure that budgets are understood and, you know, through a time that must be difficult for obviously others, even teachers, to understand that just a couple of days before budget, they find that teachers will be going. So how do we, as suggested in the report, that we would be doing things in advance? How is that likely to be done? Robert?
Thank you, convener. So that's something that we'd be happy to come back to when we look at the strategy for next year. Convener, I think the more difficult decisions the council potentially has to face, the more important it is that there's early engagement. And you'll know that the council's agreed to consult on some matters already for following the budget in this year. So I think that's something we'd be happy to come back to when we think about how we set the next budget for next year and what we can learn.
Yeah. I think it's maybe the same report as well. It noted within the report that that I think some of your figures hadn't been available in relation to recurring and non-recurring. Is that the same report? Yeah. And they were not given at the time. So what would be the recurring and non-recurring part of our budget setting at that time? If we have these figures?
So, convener, if I may, I think there was there was a miscommunication about providing that information. But I'm happy to, I haven't got them to hand just today, convener, but I'm happy to circulate that information to members of the committee. That's not a problem at all.
Yeah, be useful to know what that was on this year, twenty three, twenty four. And obviously, we would just set a budget, what would have been then as well. So we have some level of comparison. Looks like it'd be something worth giving it consideration. I noticed that one is hugely, it's in South Ayrshire, it's sort of hugely weighted in the in the direction of non-recurring. So, you know, I suppose it does stack up a wee bit of a problem with that, but I'd just like an idea of what what other councils do in relation to setting balanced budgets. So it'd be useful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, convener. I mean, most of our savings have been recurring and I think the council's got a good track record of setting a solid budget. And of course, I'm mindful that sometimes there are items of expenditure which are one-off within the budget, but what we'll do is we'll we'll provide the detail of that to members.
I would not use that information differently in the line of politics, but I'll I'll leave that to a later budget setting day. Is this report agreed? Okay, then we'll move on, Willie. Yeah, thanks. Item seventy is what it's got on Daniel Audit Plan, which is also for noting. Yes, Richard, are you looking to say anything on the report?
Thank you, convener. I'll probably get Rachel Brown, the new audit director, to come in first of all, and then I'll pick up the detail of the plan.
Good. Rachel?
Thanks very much, convener. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to introduce myself to say that I'm very pleased to be your newly appointed auditor, following the retirement of my colleague Brian Howarth. So from this year on, I will be the audit director responsible for the external audit of Dundee City Council and some other T side bodies as well, like Perth and Kross Council and the Dundee City IGB. Just a bit of background on me, I have about twenty five years of experience in public sector audit. I've worked for Audit Scotland and its predecessor bodies throughout that period. So I have considerable experience in local government audit and other sectors as well. And just to say that despite the fact we've had a change in engagement lead on the audit, I had a handover process with my predecessor to understand key points about each of the audited bodies and to reassure members that there's continuity in the team with Richard Smith continuing as the senior audit manager. And the lead senior auditor is also remaining on on the team. So there's continuity year on year there. And I'll touch on a couple of key points before I hand back to Richard to run through the detail of the plan. First point is to say I appreciate that in times of increasing financial constraints, us increasing the audit fee is not welcome. I just want to reassure members that we are also required to make efficiency savings as a public sector body. That's part of our budget proposal agreed with the SEPA. And there's more detail available publicly, should anyone wish more detail on that. So it's just to reassure you that my job is to make our audit as efficient as possible in terms of the fees that you get charged. We've kept the council audit fee at the baseline, at the lowest I am allowed to charge you for an audit fee. And there's more detail on that in in the plan itself. And just to say, you'll be aware, there's pressure on public sector audit resource and not all of our audits are completed by the target deadlines. So I just wanted to highlight that Dundee City Council is one of our priority audits this year. So we are planning to sign off by the deadline of the thirtieth of September. I mean, since the start of Covid, that that deadline has not been met for all of our audits as it was pre-Covid. So we are in a recovery period. So it was just to let you all know that Dundee City Council is one of those that's being prioritised for timely sign off this year. So you should see an improvement in that this year. And I just wanted to say that the auditing standards require us to bring certain matters to your attention as those charged with governance. So if you could bear with Richard as he takes you through certain things in the plan that you need to be aware of. So I appreciate you all have read the papers, but we need to confirm to ourselves as auditors that you have been informed of certain points. And just on that, I will draw your attention to the paragraph eight in our plan, which is asking members to raise with me today any matters that have not already been raised with audit relating to actual or suspected fraud. So we check in at the planning stage and also at the completion stage of the audit on whether there's any matters relating to fraud that need to be brought to our attention. Because that's part of the factors we consider in making a risk assessment for our risk-based audit. So I will pause there and hand over to Richard Smith to take you through the detail of the annual audit plan. So just say thank you for your patience and the pair of us will take any questions after Richard's run you through it.
Thanks, Richard. Richard?
Thank you, convener. So it shouldn't take me too long, so hopefully you won't need too much patience. But yeah, our plan's included at pages hundred and three, hundred and twenty one of your papers today. And this just gives an overview of the external audit work planned for the twenty three, twenty four financial year. The format layer of the plans, identical to prior years, and hopefully the document should be fairly self-explanatory. So I'm not planning to go through in a lot of detail. Whoever Richard says, there's a few areas that I need to highlight for members' attention. And then we'll, of course, be happy to answer any questions you have on the planned approach. So you see that the first section of the plan covers our approach to the financial statements audits and the work required to undertake to support our opinions on the twenty three, twenty four annual accounts. Within this, you'll see exhibit one, that sets out our materiality levels for the twenty three, twenty four audit. And it explains the basis for these figures and how we've reached them. When we talk about materiality, these are the figures that we assess any errors against as part of the audit. And so this also determines our audit approach and the level of testing that we need to undertake for each of our audits. Effectually, therefore, these are our tolerance levels when we're completing the audit. And although these appear quite high, that needs to be taken in the context of the overall income expenditure of the council. Moving on to exhibit two, and this details any significant risks and material misstatement or other risks and material misstatement we've identified for this year's audit. So these are the areas where there's an increased likelihood or opportunity for the financial statements to be materially misstated. And as a result, we have to have an audit response to that to make sure we've got sufficient assurance over those areas. You'll see, we've identified four such areas for the twenty three, twenty four audit of the council. So the first of these relates to opportunity for management to override existing controls to manipulate the financial position report in the accounts. Again, this may be familiar to you, as it's the standard risk that requires consideration for all our audits. So I should highlight, I'm sure Robert and Greg want me to highlight, this isn't in any way a comment on the management of Dundee City Council, but we are required to address this for all our audits. And you'll see in the final column, exhibit two, that we've identified the audit procedures we have to undertake to address that risk. The second and third risks in the table are fairly similar. These both relate to the valuation of non-current assets. And the reason these present a risk is this degree of estimation and subjectivity involving such valuations. So you see that risk two regards requirement for the council to review any categories of assets that are not subject to valuation this year, just to confirm that there's no indications that since they were last valued, there's been a material movement. So the council, like most local authorities in Scotland, operate a five-year rolling revaluation programme. But that's actually predicated on assumption that there won't be material movements in intervening years. So we had some discussions about this last year and there was some commentary on the audit report. What we require the council to do is just look at those categories of assets that aren't revalued this year to provide assurance that there's no material movements that would actually mean they're required to conduct a formal evaluation. So the council's established a process to do this review for these asset categories each year. And that's detailed in the second column, the sources of assurance column in exhibit two. So as part of our audit, we'll consider the outcome of that review. And obviously, if it did indicate those material movements, we'd expect the council then to put in place a process to carry out those revaluations or to somehow, some other way quantify what the impact is on the figures and the accounts. And again, we've got our planned audit procedures detailed in the final column, exhibit two. Risk three is slightly similar, so this relates to the full asset valuation that is being undertaken of dwellings this year. So that's as part of the council house's five-year rolling revaluation programme. That this year, there's a full valuation of council houses. So as I've already mentioned, as asset valuations are subject to a degree of estimation and subjectivity, there's potential for more error or manipulation of those figures. So again, we've had to design audit procedures just to get assurance over those valuations, address that risk. And so that'll be conducted as part of our review of fixed assets. The final risk in Exhibit two is another one that relates to the subjectivity of estimates, but this time in the valuation of pension assets and liabilities. So there's been increased volatility in pension valuation over recent years. You might be aware that the figures last year for a lot of bodies were actually pension assets for the first time in a long time. So as part of our audit, we always review the basis that you are valuing, because the figures are so huge. And part of that will be reviewing the values in the assets and liabilities. And also look at the assumptions used in those calculations to make sure that the sensible assumptions and there's nothing about the local circumstances of Dundee City Council that would suggest you should deviate from the standard assumptions. So we'll carry out that work as part of our annual audit and obviously consider the impact of that. In terms of the council, accounts are the main exhibits that set our approach. And you'll see that Paragraphs twenty six to twenty nine and Exhibit three then set out our audit approach to the audit of the financial teams of the trust administered by the council. So there's four trusts that are administered by Dundee City Council that are required to audit. But you'll see at Paragraph twenty that the actual only risk we've identified for those is that standard risk already discussed about the migrant override of controls. So they should, as you'd expect, be fairly straightforward audits are quite low value, there's got a small number of transactions, and in effect, we can usually audit almost every single transaction that goes through the trust. So we will pick them up and we should order opinions at the same time as the council. Moving on to section two of the plan, so this covers our additional responsibilities as public sector auditors under the Code of Audit Practice. And this requires considering a report on the financial management, financial sustainability of the council, its vision, leadership and governance, and also how it uses resources to improve outcomes. So you'll probably be familiar with our annual audit report, it kind of mirrors with those sections, and we'll always provide commentary in those areas, identify any particular issues or recommendations we have around those. The other thing that the section covers is our annual audit work on best value. And it notes that we conduct annual thematic reviews each year. And for twenty three, twenty four, our BV thematic work covers workforce innovation and particularly current workforce planning challenges facing all public sector bodies. So we've actually almost completed the fieldwork for this. We're anticipating issuing the draft report by the end of next week with a view to the reporting that coming to the scrutiny committee on the twenty sixth of June. So obviously, you'll see those findings in due course. The next section of the plan picks up the timetable for the financial statements audit. And I suppose the key thing here is about five, which as I already mentioned, sets out our proposed timetable in order to achieve a sign off by the end of September this year. As Rachel mentioned, Dundee City Council is a prioritised audit for this year. So we've been working with officers already to have discussions about the timing of working papers being provided and also the potential that some papers could be provided early. We should have resource available from the seventeenth of June. So potentially, we could be getting started then, and that should hopefully assist us in meeting that end of September deadline, which I suspect members are welcome, but officers are particularly welcome, because then that clears them to get on with the next year's budgeting, which always seems to come around quicker and quicker every year. Paragraphs forty three and forty four then detail the fee we've set for the twenty three, twenty four audit and also the factors we can decide on in reaching that fee. And as Rachel mentioned, there's additional information available on the fee setting process. The final section of our plan, I wouldn't be touching on any detail at all, but that just covers our approach to work with internal audit to maximise effective use of audit resources and obviously avoid duplication. So we're not looking at the same areas. It also sets out the arrangements we have in place to ensure independence and objectivity to conduct the audit and also our own internal quality control arrangements effectively. Who audits the auditors? And you'll be surprised to know that we love being audited as much as our audited bodies, so. So those are the only areas I was going to cover, Convenor, but as I say, happy to pick up any questions members have on our proposed approach for the twenty three, twenty four audit.
No, particularly, I will obviously thank both of you for the, for the contribution you've made this afternoon in highlighting the workload that you're going to take forward. I look forward to obviously the, the workforce planning one. I think that's an issue that councils face when we find it hard to recruit and perhaps we may have let just keeping an eye on the finances, let, let skill sets leave that perhaps we shouldn't have let go. So that, that, that'll be interesting to see what the, the work stream delivers there. I usually have a wind that your price is going up, or maybe not do that, but having said it, hope that counts. And, you know, I just sort of look forward to working with you again next year. I could say that if I knew any, if anything that was needed to be said in relation to fraud, I'm sure like every other councillor sitting on the meeting or every other officer at the meeting would be bringing it to your attention. So I think you'd be reassured that we would want to see the best use of the public person would be quick enough in coming forward. Is there any other comments or is this report agreed? It's agreed then, well, we'll move on. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. Item eight then is Internal Audit Reports. This is also for noting, and Kathy Wiley, Chief Internal Auditor, is here to speak to the item.
Okay, over to yourself then, Kathy. You're on mute, I think.
Sorry, I thought I had taken that off. Thank you, Convenor. There are two reports coming to you this time round. One is the Planning Scotland Act two thousand and nineteen, which has comprehensive assurance and the fleet minimum service levels, which has got substantial assurance. Just to remind you that we changed the style of our reporting and the, the the Planning Scotland Act work was done quite a while ago and the draft report had been in the old style. We haven't updated the style. But we have used the new assessment mechanism in terms of how the comprehensive assurance was arrived at. On page one hundred and twenty six here, the this audit around the Planning Act looked at the preparations for implementing the, the Scotland, the Planning Scotland Act two thousand and nineteen. And the audit was, was very positive. We did get assurance that there had been proper preparations, that there was effective monitoring of the implementation. And the financial implications had also been considered in planning how to implement the act. We don't have any recommendations in this report, but we have made the observation that the service themselves have identified that there may be some issues and risk around being able to recruit the resources that are needed to implement the changes going forward. The second one that we're looking at here today is the fleet minimum service levels. The scope of that review was to look at the arrangements that were in place within corporate service, so sorry, corporate fleet to provide the vehicles to other service areas, including contingency arrangements in the event of planned maintenance and breakdown. We've got substantial assurance here around the processes that are in place. We have made an observation also about other issues that were identified within services, and these have not been taken into consideration in providing the assurance level because they were out with the scope of this audit. But there is another piece of work that officers are taking forward to address the issues there, just to help to make sure that we get best value from what's happening with, with the use of, of fleet. And we identified some good practice around the communication between the, the service and the other services and also the records that are kept around the vehicle maintenance schedules. There are also other items that are in course that are being put in place at the moment with the service level agreement being developed and the new plant and vehicle asset management plan. We did have some recommendations which are around a better exchange of information between corporate fleet and services. Also around sharing more information around the maintenance and requirements of vehicles in terms of when they might not be available. And also to provide a bit more information to services to help them make sure they get best value if they are using alternative means when other vehicles are not available. But happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I see Billy McPherson's looking to come in.
Thanks, Convenor. I don't have a question regarding the planning one. It's, it's in relation to fleet. And it's really more in relation to what Kathy touched on about the areas that really weren't covered in this particular exercise. And Kathy did mention that, you know, an exercise is underway to examine fleet requirements across services and how these can be rationalised to, you know, reduce costs and make sure we have the most efficient way of providing fleet to meet service requirements. I, I notice it says it's a part, as part of budget reviews, and I was just really wondering if, I don't know if that's Kathy or another officer, could give more information regarding what this exercise is, where it sits at the minute and where it will report to and in what time scale.
You will answer that, Kathy?
I think that Robert has his hand up. I think he's better placed to answer that.
Robert or Paul, either the two of you.
Thank you, Convenor. Thank you, Barry McPherson. So you recall through the, the revenue monitoring reports, we've highlighted pressure in the fleet service. So a comprehensive review's been undertaken. Paul's been leading on that, looking at the extent of the fleet, the processes for managing that, how we're managing the charging and the reporting out of the service. So that's a piece of work that's, that's ongoing at the moment. It's been considered through the leadership team and is going back to the leadership team probably next month to look at how we take forward. So we'll be reporting through next year's revenue monitoring. Convenor, how the performance of the fleet is going forward. If there are any changes to services on the back of that, then obviously those will come to the relevant committee for their consideration. But this is really about how we can properly make sure we can demonstrate best value in the delivery of the services and obviously manage within the approved revenue budget for them.
Okay, can I just perhaps come back on that? And I, I, I know what Mr Emmett says with regard to, you know, finding its way into future revenue monitoring reports. They're quite detailed, Robert, as you know, and cover, you know, the way, you know, the wide area of obviously all the revenue monitoring across services across the council. So I was just really wondering, is what, once this is, the outcome of this has gone to senior management for consideration, could perhaps members of the scrutiny committee be given an update? It could be done by email, doesn't need to necessarily be a report to the scrutiny committee. Just really on what the key outcomes of that are and what the way forward is proposed. It would save us trying to find it frankly in, in future revenue monitoring reports.
Robert, you can produce that, yeah?
Yeah, I felt happy, Convenor, happy to provide information in due course. It's still work in progress, Barry McPherson, but obviously, once we've finished, we're happy to share with you what we're doing.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I wasn't sort of putting a time scale on that. It'll take as, as it, as it takes. You indicated something would go to, you know, senior management likely in the next month, but it just, whenever it happens, I think it'd just be useful for members of the scrutiny committee to be given an update on what the outcome of that is. And, and I'm grateful for your reply. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. These two reports are two audits agreed. Okay. Well, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Item nine then is Internal Audit Plan Progress Report. Again, Kathy Wiley will speak to this item.
Okay, what do you get now, Kathy?
Okay, thank you, Convenor. So this is the Audit Plan Progress Update. It's got the, the table with all of the items from the plan and what stage they're at, and it has some information about the outstanding internal audit actions. We've also got a couple of other things that we're asking you to agree. So I'll just run quickly through what's in section four of this. In terms of the current stage of, of planning or, or of, of progress, we've now got our two new members of staff in place and, and working. So that's helping us move things forward. We've also got the support from AZETS undertaking some audits as well. So I know there's a, a large number of audits there that we've said will be developed, developed in time to be reported in June. And I, I hope that we'll report most of these. I think we'll be doing really well if we report all of these, but all of these are at a stage where we could be able to report them and it'll just depend on how quickly we're getting information and how easy that information is to deal with. Just how quickly we're able to progress each of the individual audits and how many of them will be finished. I'm quite content that there'll be enough work done by the time I have to produce my annual opinion for that not to be an, an issue, that there will be sufficient information for me to provide that in, in time for the June committee. And there are a few items there at four point four on page one hundred and thirty three where we've, we've made a few more changes to the plan and we're just asking you to approve them. The first one is around workforce and succession planning. We had a piece of work in there that I know you were keen to see done. But when we looked at the scope that we had agreed for that, and then we looked at the work that the external auditors have just told you about, that they've undertaken. There was quite a lot of overlap and it didn't seem that it would be sensible for us to undertake that audit at this time. So we've removed that from the plan and, and we've also taken out the insurance audit because the, the manager within internal audit is responsible for insurance and we felt that his time would be better used right at the moment, just making sure we get as many audits finished before June as possible. And that we'll do that audit around insurance, which AZETS will lead on in, in the next year. We've included that in next year's plan. And the final bit was about the I T audits. We've just really reported the twenty one, twenty two audits quite late. We're in the process of undertaking the twenty two, twenty three audits now. So we're looking at what's happening at the moment in those. And we've got three audits in the plan for twenty four, twenty five. So it just felt like it was a bit unfair to be trying to do another three audits on internal, on I T at this stage for the twenty three, twenty four plan. So we've taken those out of there as well, just because I think we've got sufficient coverage of the I T work going forward. The other areas that I wanted to ask for your agreement on is, and I've, I've included two appendices here just to remind you. I think you've probably seen some of this information before. But the SIPF guidance that was updated back in two thousand and twenty two about what audit committees should be doing, included the need for a self assessment of your, your performance during the period and also a production of an annual report which would go up to council. So the SIPF guidance includes a questionnaire and what we're proposing is that officers will supplement a couple of questions into that questionnaire just around knowledge and skills, just so that we can gather the information that we need around that as well. And feed that into the potential for any training that's required. But also summarise all of that into the annual report. We would follow the annual report process that's included in the guidance. And what we're hoping if we get the approval today, that we'll get all of that done in time to be able to produce that information for the June committee. And I think that's everything that I wanted to draw attention on this, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I see any questions for you answering the chat anyway. Kathy said we're getting off light. No got a problem with filling up the, the self assessment forum, so. As I take it, this report then is agreed. Okay, we'll move on then, will we?
Okay, thanks. Item ten is Internal Audit Plan. This is for approval and Kathy Wiley will speak to this item.
Yourself again now, Kathy. You're on the spot.
I am. So, so this is the twenty four, twenty five plan. We've prepared this plan using the same process as we did last year. We've got an audit universe which lists all the areas that we could potentially be looking at in terms of where we might undertake some audit. We've spoken to stakeholders within the council itself. We've considered the wider environment in which the council is operating and the risks that are arising from that. We've looked at the risk registers. And we've, we've taken a risk based approach to identifying the areas that we would want to undertake auditing. We've included items that were taken out of the plan previously and, and, and most of them, I think, if not all of them, have ended up in the plan again this year because they've still been items where we've assessed that the risk is such that we should undertake the audit there. And there are maybe slightly less number in the plan than I would normally have, given that we're back up to having a full team again. But I just wanted to make sure that we didn't overburden the team, given that we're likely to have a few audits from the current plan being carried forward. We can always add more audits later on in the year if we get to the point where we've managed to, to deliver all of this. And I think that's all I really need to say, to be honest, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Okay. Again, was it Billy McPherson?
It was just a comment, Billy. I was, I was pleased to see within system reviews, housing plan and reactive maintenance being included. I think we're all aware of the fact that the housing maintenance has had significant challenge since the pandemic. And although I think we, we, we're starting to see progress in relation to backlogs and such like, I think including that is, is helpful. I, I, I assume you're confident that'll be done within the twenty four, twenty five financial year, Kathy.
Well, yeah, I'll make sure that we do prioritise that one since it's one you're particularly interested in.
Yeah, it's, I'm not the only member that's, that's raised issues around housing, housing maintenance, yourself, Convenor. I think you've raised it fairly regularly as well. So I think we'd be very keen to see that happen, Kathy. So very grateful to you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's for sure. I think housing. That's for sure. I think housing in the city is a problem in general. So the more we can do to sharpen it up there, the better. If there is someone going to draft. But an audit would perhaps highlight a few things. So, yeah, I appreciate that being done fairly soon as well. Okay, is this report agreed? Yeah, looks like it. Okay, Willie?
Okay, thanks very much, Convenor. Item 11 then is other reports relevant to the remit of the scrutiny committee. This is for approval and Cathy Wiley was speaking to the item.
Cathy again, on the spot.
Thank you, Convenor. This is just information that's been gathered from information that's in the public domain from partner organisations and it's issues that are relevant to the remit that you have as a scrutiny committee. And just to bring to your attention information around governance and audit in those partner organisations. And it's an opportunity, if you want to ask for any further information, that that would be, could be provided in future.
Yeah, I appreciate that being brought forward, Cathy. I think it's a useful report. So thanks very much for bringing that to our attention. Is there any questions for Cathy on this report? Fraser?
Yeah, I was just going to say, just to concur with your point there, Convenor. I think this is actually very useful because if you're not on T-Side contracts, for example, it's actually helpful to get useful links to the latest information. I specifically asked for an elected member's update on progress with the T-Cities deal because although you can read the the minutes via the links there, I think it would just be useful. And I'm grateful to officers for agreeing to do that because when you're not that close to a particular area, you know, for example, T Roadbridge Joint Board, well, I'm the vice chair, I know exactly what's going on, but there are joint boards and other organisations, T-Cities deal is a good example where a lot moves. And it's very useful to actually have links to minutes and updates. But as I say, I certainly feel an update to all elected members on progress with the T-Cities deal would be useful. And I'm grateful to officers for agreeing to that. Thank you.
Okay, there's no other comments on this report. So is this report agreed? It looks like it. And I say good night to the rest of you. See and enjoy the rest of your day.
Good afternoon. I've not got my bed yet, Kevin.
Good afternoon, good night, good evening. And it's good night for me. See you later.
See you later, everyone. Thank you. Bye.